I think the call is meeting of the Zion City Council of order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Here.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Pastor Cole?
Father God, we thank you that you allowed us to come here safely. We thank you that we are doing your business, not just ours, but we're staying within your plan. Lord, I ask that you bless each one of the council members who are here as they do your work. We ask that everything be done decently and in order. We ask that all these things be done in your name. Jesus, amen.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four on the agenda's...agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any agenda changes? Are we going to have a departmental commentary tonight? Yes, we are. I'll have a departmental commentary at that point. Anybody have any changes? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
The move.
Have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is citizen comments. We have one person that would like to speak tonight, Brittany Parker.
Don't record me. You can't record me.
I don't think it hurts you.
You can't record me.
I have to.
In the uniform. Last time I came, you didn't, because I'm in uniform.
I was supposed to record you afterward.
Is it a public thing? Or come without your uniform?
I just got off work, I'm sorry. I'm here because we...I don't know if this is the correct forum, but we have an issues with our HOA. And I don't know if you all can assist, but I know that our HOA, like we have a budget for, say for instance, the Zion Police Department. And we're told that we...$2,000 everybody has...like it goes towards the Zion Police Department. We were told by the president of our HOA that they have a contract with the Zion Police Department. So then I cross-referenced with the Zion Police Department, and they told us that they're not under contract, but they are pretty much told that if they need ex...if we need extra security in our subdivision, that it's like, I guess, $50 an hour. So the issue is it's 2,000, but last year Zion Police Department came out in October for six hours, and it was $300. So it's a lot of issues going on, but we don't know where else to go. Because we were told, like, I believe money is being embezzled through our HOA, but when I talked to their lawyer for the HOA, they told us that for...because we didn't follow under SECCA, the last seven years, they don't have to tell us anything. Because we were wondering where were invoices, where was everything to let us know where money is going. And they said they don't have to tell us anything. So I don't know if this is...I don't know if this is the correct place to come, but because the city's name is being thrown in there for different reasons, I don't know if bringing it up to you all to see what can be done.
I'll take a stab at this.
Is there a special detail?
I consider, like, what subdivision you live in?
Shepherd's Crossing.
Shepherd's Crossing does have an agreement with the Zion Police Department for what we call special duty. They can hire back police officers. Generally, it's around the holidays when they want extra control in their subdivision, they'll hire the police back on a special duty contract. We have an annual contract with them. It's not any set hours, it's by request, and it's only when we can actually fill that and meet their request. One suggestion would be if she has questions about financial records, I'm sure she could FOIA the city's records of our time that we've spent at Shepherd's Crossing on special duty for the last 12 months or 24 months.
Yeah, I'm not even sure that you would have to FOIA it. I'm sure that our finance director could come up with that information fairly easily. But, okay, then you need to FOIA. But as far as anything else goes, that's not...we have no control over the homeowners' association. And I would advise you, if you have issues, that I probably shouldn't give you legal advice, but I would advise you to get an attorney.
Okay.
That's something that we don't have any control over, what they do or how it's done, or with their funds or anything. But if...that's...that's why there's...apparently that's why there's a line item in there for police, but yeah.
You laugh, though, because you know something's going on.
No, 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 no. No, I didn't. I was...I did laugh, but I shouldn't have laughed.
It's okay, because we laugh and cry kind of at the same time, because we're not understanding where all this money is going.
And off the top of my head, I don't know how many hours we've worked out there the last year or two. You know, I don't oversee the actual special duty detail, and it's, you know, picked up by various officers, but there is financial records of that.
Well, I appreciate that, at least I can get something. But then there's like $50,000, $60,000 that's unaccounted for.
And you asked the president of the HOA for this information?
Yes, yes, yes. And instead of him giving me information, he forwarded it to his lawyer. And she's the one that told me that they...legally, they don't have to tell me anything. And I just know that, being on different boards, there's a president, there's a secretary, there's a treasurer, but when we went to the meeting, there was no one taking notes, like, where's the minutes from the last seven years? But they said they don't have to tell us anything. And this just sounds real shady. And I know they don't like that I just moved there, because I just moved there September 1st, and I'm shaking things up, I guess, I don't know. But something's not right.
But I would advise you, get your own attorney. And that, that's a private matter between the residents and the association.
Yeah, I don't know of any homeowners' association that I've ever dealt with or been a part of that hasn't been informed about everything that's going on with the association. I've moved and...I've lived in different states, and I always had that information accounted for. So I think it would probably behoove you and the other residents to get together and find out what's going on. That's information that, to my knowledge, in my experience, all HOAs have shared very openly.
And then have you ever heard of it being a nonprofit? Because the lawyer told me, because it was a non-for-profit, that's why they don't have to tell us.
That I don't...
I've never heard that.
If they're non-for-profit, then they have to file a 990 with the IRS, and we need to get that information.
I think we should be careful what we're saying here.
Oh, yeah, I'm not advising you.
I'm not correcting you, I hope you know. I think we're getting real close to us.
No, I understand.
And furthermore, I'm just...
I just think you need to get an attorney, that you need to talk to your own attorney, and that's a private matter between you and the association.
Well, thanks for the assistance.
Okay.
Because I didn't know where to start. But thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number six is a consent agenda with a clerk. Please read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on November 21st, 2017 at 7:00 p.m. Bills vouchers 127956 through 128034 drawn on First Merit Bank, total $1,362,840.39.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Show numbers. And a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number seven is consider passing resolution as follows. 7A is truth in taxation law resolution to continue public hearing on a proposed property tax levy for 2017 to December 19th, 2017 for city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. At the last council meeting, we adopted a truth in taxation resolution. Part of that resolution is to set a public hearing where the public can come and talk about the tax levy, their concerns, questions, and council can discuss the levy as well. We set that for today, but unfortunately with the holidays, we missed the deadline for publication of the notice of the public hearing. There's a strict timeline of when it gets published to how many days you can...how many days after you can have the meeting, and we missed that by, I think, a day. So we're...I'm asking that we actually continue this to the December 19th meeting. We have a public meeting before the...or at 7 o'clock, but in advance of the regular city council meeting.
And Director...City Administrator Nabel and I have talked about this, and what we're going to do, it's kind of disingenuous, I think, to have a public hearing and then make a decision immediately afterwards. And I think it can often give the appearance that we've made a decision ahead of time. So Director Nabel will have four options available on the levy for that meeting. So they will be there, and we will select one of those, or in between one of them, or whatever we want to do. But they'll be...we will have an opportunity to have a...it won't be just coming in with one levy recommendation. Is there a motion to pass a resolution? I'll move to pass the resolution. And a motion? A second. And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill? Nope, Mayor Hill.
I mean, it involves a lot of things. Item number...I...Item number eight is discussion authorization and approval. 8A is consider waiving fire alarm permit fee for the Family Resource Center of Zion for Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Family Resource Center of Zion's recently relocated to 3452 Sherwood Suite E. They were previously located over at Pierce Campus, and with the changes going on at Pierce Campus, they were forced to find a new location. Their business around Solian donations receives no federal, state, or local funding. When Director Ianson and I did their initial inspection for a change of use, one of the things we asked them to do based on ordinances to install a fire alarm system. Ms. King was there when we did it. She graciously, without hesitation, agreed to do it as long as they could find the funding and the help to install it through some donations and people through the Family Resource Group, which I gave them time to do that. They submitted plans, we reviewed them. That initiated a $380 plan review fee, and since then, she has requested that we waived that $380 fee. Their fire alarm system is very limited, took very little time to review, and based on their cooperation, their limited funds, and the time I place into reviewing the project, I can support waiving the $380 fee. So I leave it up to you to approve it if you so wish. And they are here if you have questions.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion?
Just for your information, I sit on the board of the Family Resource Center, so I'm going to abstain from voting on this matter.
Okay, and I've got...I guess I got a couple of comments. I thought we had established a policy not too terribly long ago for churches and nonprofit organizations so that we wouldn't have to be dealing with questions like this and then trying to choose from one to the other. And it's my underst...I mean, what I remember of the policy is that we agreed that for nonprofits and churches, that we would waive half of their building fees or any other fees. So it seems to me, to be consistent with everybody, they should be charged $190 rather than the $380.
We certainly did that with the building fees. I don't know if we did that with fire inspection fees.
I did check. It checked.
Oh, we did both.
And it said building and other fees.
Okay.
Or permit fees, building permits and other permit fees. So it was for everything, so. We have a motion. Is there further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor.
I would like to change my motion then to make it $190 instead of $380.
Boy, I have a motion to waive the permit fee on the floor.
Yes, we do.
For the second. Why don't we take a vote on that, and then we can always have a second motion then.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
This is to waive?
No.
So no.
No.
Okay. Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Passing.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Mayor Hill?
No.
Is there another motion to this issue?
I would make the motion that instead of the fee that...the full fee of $380, it would be reduced to $390.
$190.
$190, excuse me.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, McDowell. Passed. She did it, she passed, so. So it's $190 rather than $380. Item 8B is tabulation of bids, cleaning and maintenance services for City Hall Police Administration, public works for Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. City received four bids for the cleaning and maintenance service for City Hall Police Administration and Public Works. All four bids were responsive bids. Multi-System Management, $33,540. Best Quality Cleaning, $35,700. FM Plus Green, $45,456. PMG Quality Services, $45,600. Staff is recommending the lowest responsible bidder, Multi-System Management Company for $33,540.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion?
Do we have to pay prevailing wages on this type of service? Is that why it's so expensive?
Yes, I think we have to pay prevailing wages on everything.
Well, it's pretty time consuming, they put a lot of time in between the three buildings.
Did we check their references?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And they're acceptable?
Everything was comeback positive, yes.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8C is tabulation of bids, 2018, 18 Water Main Replacement Project for Director Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. You have before you the bid tabulations for the 1,000 block of 19th Street Water Main Replacement Project. Staff is recommending accepting the low bid from Morrow Sewer Construction Company of Dust Plains, Illinois, for the base and alternate bids in the amount of $309,855. Construction for this project will begin in the spring of 2018, and it has already been budgeted for in the 2017-18 Water Project.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve this accepting the low bid from Morrow Sewer Construction in the amount of $309,855.
And a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8D is consider request for financial contribution to Lake County Opiate Initiative, a way out program for Chief Dumian.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I apologize, this got a little wordy, so I'll try to reduce it to... In July of this year, the Zion Police Department announced our participation in very important and innovative program, as we joined the Way Out Program. The Way Out Program is a Lake County, Illinois law enforcement assisted diversion program designed to fast-track users to substance abuse programs and services. The Lake County Opiate Task Force, on behalf of the Way Out Program, applied for a federal grant to manage this program. In addition to managing this program, that person would have managed the underage drinking task force in Lake County as well. That federal grant was not awarded, so the task force approached the Lake County Board and requested a contribution towards this program. Surprisingly, the Board of...Lake County Board contributed $50,000 to the Opiate Task Force and Underage Drinking Task Force, with one stipulation that the participating agencies had to meet the rest of that financial burden of $50,000. Our department, along with 10 other departments, have agreed to contribute funds in order to hire this program manager to manage both the Opiate Task Force Way Out Program and the other underage drinking task force. I'm requesting the City Council approve a one-time contribution from the Drug Asset Forfeiture Fund in the amount of $7,500 to support the Lake County Opiate Task Force with this proposed position to manage both of these task forces. I can't think of a better use of C's drug funds than contributing to this organization to help users get into programs.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we spend $7,500 in support of the Way Out Program from the Drug Forfeiture Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I'd just like to ask Chief Dumian to explain the program a little bit more as another means of advertising it. I think it's a great program.
Yes, we brought that up in July. The Way Out Program actually is...been featured on a couple of TV programs already, I think on Discovery Channel or A and E. It's a great initiative, it's gotten recognition throughout the country as a program to fast-track drug and alcohol users in treatment programs. So an individual could walk in the Zion Police Department, he could have drug or heroin drugs on him, he could request to get into the Way Out Program. An officer would be called, and the station would facilitate getting him to that program. But we go as far as driving them to the treatment facility, if that means that they've got to sit at the police department for six, seven hours. We have some individuals that we can call to sit with them, keep them calm. Preferably, we don't want them to leave the station. Obviously, if they leave, it's very hard for them to get the courage to come back. One of the good things about this program is if they walk in with heroin or drugs and they ask for this assistance, they're not going to be charged for that. They could even walk in with a warrant, and we have situation and protocol set up with Lake County State's attorneys where they may not necessarily get taken to the county jail at that time on that warrant, they might be taken to this...to a facility for treatment. We've had three individuals so far enter into the program since July. Unfortunately for us, we've had to take them as far as Chicago for the treatment, but we are committed to doing that, so. It's a great program, this is a one-time contribution. I think that they'll be awarded that grant next year. The plan is to apply for that grant in March of 2018, and they actually missed it by one point, so.
I think it's a great idea, and I'm...but I don't think it has to be a one-time contribution. It's a one-time contribution this year, but if they don't get the grant next year, I think we should participate.
And I do want to point out, that money that we're contributing comes from drug dealers, that's seized from them. Occasionally, it's seized from drug users, but the majority of that money comes from drug dealers.
And how do we get the word out on this?
It's advertised quite heavily. I don't know if they're still running it, but there was an infomercial, a short commercial. You went into the local theater, Gurnee Mills, et cetera. It was a short commercial for the Way Out Program playing prior to the movie. It's posted in our lobby, it's posted on our website, posted on our Facebook page.
I don't mean to be...I'm not being critical, but I think if somebody is heavy-duty into heroin or opiates, I doubt that they're spending time at Gurnee Mills or coming into the police station.
It's actually word of mouth that gets it out the most, yeah. They've had one instance so far, I think it was a walk into Munnell Police Department. They came from Tennessee. They heard about the program, and the family drove them up here and got them for that program.
Really?
Yeah.
And how successful were we with the three that we assisted so far?
We don't track that, that's one of the things that we do not do. I think that the program itself is tracking the success, but the police departments do not do that.
That'd be, I think that'd be a very interesting statistics to know.
Well, I can tell you that...
How's it working?
Yeah, there's incidents with other departments that I'm aware of where they've had to come in. They go through the Way Out Program, and they might go through it a second, maybe even a third time, but we're committed to getting them help. And we, as, you know, police officers, we realize that it may take more than one time.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have a motion and a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8F is consider renewal of property casualty or workman's compensation insurance for 2017-18 for City Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Our brokers have attached a proposal...Assurance Agency, our brokers, they went to market for quotes for our insurance policies, and you have a proposal from them. Our current provider for general liability and umbrella insurance has declined to renew due to the risk assessments that they did internally, but they did offer to extend the policy at the current rate for 120 days, so that'll carry us through April 15, 2018. Our brokers will then go to market again shortly...or will go to market again shortly to get revised quotes for insurance coverage on that, probably in mid-December to early January. We should have those results. Based on this, I would recommend the renewal of all the policies as detailed on Page 5 and 6 of the proposal, as well as we have the brokerage service agreement with Assurance Agency at the end of the proposal for 2018. They are proposing...the quotes that came back actually represent a 7% increase over prior premiums, largely due to the increase in workers' compensation.
Is there a motion? I'll move to approve. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion?
So we're approving this temporary measure?
Correct. We're approving everything except that policy for a one-year period.
Okay.
And that policy at the current rate till...for a 120-day extension. So probably coming back in February, early March with a renewal. And our brokers are currently discussing with insurance providers what the best option would be on a quote, whether it would be an eight-month quote to get us through December, or it would be like a 20-month quote to get us through December of next year, how that would best...how that would be most favorable to us. But right now, is a lot of the insurance companies, it's their busiest time of year for renewals and everything, so in January, they'll be a lot more likely to look at our accounts and be interested in proposing, because right now, with the workflows that they have, they probably wouldn't look at us for quotes.
Did they give what the risks were that prompted them to decline coverage?
Right now, it's reserves on the books for potential claims against the city that might result in touching the umbrella policy over and above limits on the other policies.
Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. I ask your indulgence, I skip item E. 8E is request permission to fill two patrol officer vacancies and request the names of the next two qualified candidates from the Police and Fire Commission patrol officer eligibility list for Chief Dumian.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, I think you said it all there. In September of 2017, Sergeant Brian Peaney retired from the Zion Police Department creating the vacancy. In addition to the vacancy that was created by this retirement, one police officer remains on extended workers' compensation, and he is not expected to return to duty. I respectfully request the City Council to approve the filling of these two police positions from the current eligibility register of police officer candidates established by the Zion Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. If approved, these two new officers will attend the Police Academy on January 8th, 2018. Finance Director...correction. City Administrator Nabel has confirmed that this will not have a significant impact on our budget due to the workers' compensation and the pay difference between the veteran officers on workers' compensation, the retired sergeant, and the starting pay of the new officers.
I'll make a motion that we approve this request of hiring two new officers.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion?
Just to say that some slots have come available in the Police Academy that were not available previously, and this is a real opportunity for us to gain two new officers.
Right. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8G is discussion regarding solar panel project for City Administrator Nabel.[1797.54]
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Recently, we've been contacted by a few companies in regards to interest in installation of solar panels within the city. These projects would help to utilize currently underutilized land while increasing availability of renewable energy, which is needed for electric power supplier portfolios. Included in your packet is some information on the two companies, Synergy Power and Community Power Group. They are currently looking at the property at our landfill near Horvath in Jethro area, approximately, a little over 10 acres is what they're looking at. They'll be applying for grants to assist in the funding of the project and part of the application is site control. As a result, we would need to enter into a lease for the land or an option for the lease if we're interested in moving forward with this project. A sample of the lease options are included in your packets as well, and they are currently in attorney review to make sure that there are proper protections for the city in this as well. The benefit to the city and its residents would be lease, excuse me, lease income on the property as well as potential reduced rate to residents and businesses by purchasing supply at a lower rate than is currently available in the market. We do have representatives from both of the companies here if there are any questions on the actual project. We will need to come back on the December 19 meeting for any actual action items on this. We also have to work with planning and zoning on creating a zoning classification in our code for solar-type projects. The plan is to do that in January, so any approvals on leases would be contingent on that zoning being created as well.
How do you want to proceed?
Well, we wanted to get, inform the council that we're looking at this project as an option because, I mean, while this is an initial step, because we control that land, which makes it easier for the companies to move forward with site control, this is community solar projects, so there's size restrictions, but we'd also be looking at down the road, potentially expanding this to other properties within the city, whether it be on Ninth Street or south of Ninth Street on the North Shore land, potentially down the road, decommissioned nuclear power plant site, landfill sites, things like that. And I wanted to make sure that this is a direction that the council wanted to go in, that they had interest in. And if there are any concerns about how this works, the impact on the area, things like that, that we have the opportunity to have the representatives here to ask questions. If you're in support of this project, then we'll just wait for attorney review and come back with a recommendation on the 19th. But if there are, I mean, I just wanted to have the opportunity to have questions asked if you had concerns about this.
Do we know what the land is zoned right now? How it's zoned?
It's open space, park actually, right now.
So, what would, would it have to be zoned in order for them to utilize it for solar panels?
We currently don't have a zoning district for...
Right. The zoning itself would not have to change per se.
Okay.
It's just that our code is silent as to anything dealing with solar panels. So, we would need to do a text amendment that would have to go to planning and zoning, I believe, January 4th, Director Ryerson. So, we do have time to publish for that, to get the necessary publication in, but the code is silent. It's a relatively new concept. You're starting to see it more and more, so we need to keep up with the times. So, as Administrator Nabel indicated, that anything that the city may enter into would have to be on contingent upon making those modifications.
Yeah, we wouldn't actually be, we would, so on the 19th, would we actually be making a decision to lease the property?
Correct. We'd be, it'd be contingent on the zoning.
Okay, contingent on the zoning.
But we'd be entering into a lease or an option to lease at that point. Again, you know, we, we're, the landfill on the Horvath landfill is a little bit of a different situation because it's probably best use for that property is a project like this, but you are passing on potential other development opportunities, not a whole lot on that property, but if we decide to do these types of projects going forward as well, I mean, we'll take them on a case-by-case basis, but that if there are other plans or other ideas for these properties, that council has an option to discuss that, or if they think this is the best use for the community, that we discuss that as well.
It's my understanding that they're asking for the lease kind of quickly because in order to apply for the grant, they have to have the property under their control?
Correct. To get in queue for the grants, they, you know, if they apply for the grant but they don't have a site or they don't have rights to a site?
Right.
They would be looked over for those.
Okay. And I got a question for Director Colangelo. There's 10 point, I believe it's 10.4 acres of our property, 12.2 acres of the Park District property right next door to it. Is that available for, would that be available for this use also? I mean, is it physically okay to use that property?
Ours or both?
The Park, I'm assuming that ours is because I'm assuming, I think, I believe I read that you, they both looked at it and said, "Yeah, that would work for them," so I'm...
I'm not in their field. I mean, they could probably answer that question. Our property is relatively flat, would need minor grading to put a project like this on it, where the Park District's isn't. It's a very steep slope, but I mean, those guys would have, these guys would have to answer that question. I couldn't tell you.
Do you guys have a, either one of you have a...
That's the hill section.
The hill section.
Off the top of your head, would you utilize that hill?
Yeah, so, we would be able to use...
Could you address the council?
Sure, identify yourself.
And what company or organization you're with?
Yeah, so, my name is Mike Borkowski. I'm with the Community Power Group, and we did do a site review at this site as well as the other North Shore landfill sites and the nuclear site to look at all those. The site that's being discussed the evening, this evening, the 10 acres plus the 12 acres, between the combination of those two, we'll find about 15 to 17 acres that will work very well for a community solar project. And as brief background, the way these community solar projects work, there are about 10 to 15 acres of solar panels. They don't make any noise, they don't have any polluting materials attached to them, they connect to the power lines that are right there on the street, and typically for these types of projects, especially if it's a city project, we sell the power back to the community. In the city's case, I believe there isn't the need for that, but for its residents in which you guys are currently offering certain pooled power options, we would be offering this electric at a discount to what those options are. So, we would be, in essence, passing back some of the grant money and all those types of things to ensure that the residents are getting cheaper power than what's available in the marketplace today. Additionally, one of the things that we look to do in our projects is we look to get the community involved to find employment opportunities for those locally. Solar is something that's brand-new to Illinois. The program was launched in December of 2016 via law, but it actually won't get implemented until the beginning of 2018 when we start seeing construction actually happen. And there's going to be a massive wave of construction that happens over the three to four years following that, and my guess, just like every other state in the United States, there'll be an expansion of the solar even beyond that once the success of it is initially realized. So, these employment opportunities will come in, they'll get trained to work on the construction of these sites, and then as additional sites roll, they'll continue to work with the next employees after that, or the next projects after that, and after that, and after that as solar kind of rolls through the state. And so, the way the grant program works is it's a declining block program. So, our expectation is that in the summer of 2018, that block will open. In order to qualify for that block, you have to have your permit, you have to have your permit to build on a landfill, which is a whole process outside of what's happening here in the city, and you'll need an agreement with the utility to interconnect. Now, they have to do that by right, but you, it's about a six-month study, and it's a costly study that you have to undergo to determine how much it's going to cost to connect your solar facility and deliver it into the grid.
Let me ask you a question here. Is you us or is you you? When you say you have to do this and it's expensive?
So, we do that.
Okay.
So, what we do is because it's a six-to-eight month development process, in order for us to apply for our interconnect application, in order for us to apply for our landfill permit, and even for us to apply for a permit with the city itself for this use on this land, we have to have control of that land. And the way we have control is with a lease, and that lease provides us with, you know, a two-year development period to get all of our work and permits and everything in place, and it gives us basically two years to start construction.
Okay, I don't want to get into details on the lease, it's just...
Got it. Yeah.
Let me, I want to give the gentleman an opportunity if you...
I have one question before he goes. Mr. Borkowski, you say control of the land and the lease. What's the cutoff for that? Because as you just heard, the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to address this. It needs to be brought to the council. So, is it detrimental if you don't enter into a lease by a certain date?
Yeah, so, that actually was, I'm glad you asked that question. That's the right question. So, the reason there's a bit of a push to make this happen is because as I was talking about earlier, the grant program is a declining block program. And so, you have the greatest chances of getting the program done to the extent you're in that first block. If you miss that first block, the prices go down.
What's the deadline on having to have a lease? What's your drop dead date?
I think, I think a lease needs to be done kind of late this month, by January. Otherwise, you're going to miss that first block. And there is, there's landfill RFPs coming up in the spring of 2018 in which you need permit, and it's going to take six to eight months. The thing I don't know, the reason it's somewhat difficult to answer that question is because I don't know exactly how long it's going to take to get that landfill permit. I don't know how long ComEd is going to take to study and come back to us and say you can interconnect. What I do know is that takes six to eight months. And so, that six to eight months, if we start today, puts us in kind of July, August of next year. So, the sooner the better. I would say if we're past January, we miss the first block.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Okay. For the site that you're projecting, are you looking at that you need both the city part of the property and the Park District part of the property?
Yes, we will need a combination of the two.
Does that require the Park District's cooperation on this lease?
Sure, and they're going to have to lease their portion of there because half of the property belongs to them and half of it belongs to us.
That's right.
So, for, in order for the site to be viable, you do need to have as much of that 22, it's 22 acres, isn't it, total?
It's about 22 in total, that's right.
He's saying 15 is used.
Yeah, and so, what, all we, from a, to get the interconnection process started, if we only have one permit at that point of time, or if we only have one lease at that point of time, we can start the interconnect process, we can start the permit process, and we'll finalize things with the Park District.
Well, the Park District, the Park District should be fairly quick because they're going to have to go through zoning.
Right.
That's only us.
Right. You can get, you can get a lease from them at their next meeting.
Well, we don't have anything...
Well, I shouldn't say that.
No, we don't have anything regulating solar panels in the city until we take action.
Yeah, and that's...
Right, I know, but they could enter into a lease with the Park District.
Contingent upon that?
Right, or something.
I don't...
Yeah, the leases are contingent upon getting permits and everything like that. So, inside our lease, there is a clause in there that says, you know, we're not doing anything unless we actually, you know, get the permits and everything. What we really need, us or the other developer, doesn't really matter, is you need a lease so that you can start the interconnect process and you can start the landfill permit process, which is different than the city permit process.
Okay. Now, I want to give these guys a chance to present their position.
Hello, honorable city officials. My name is Bill. This is Chad.
Chad Chavasi.
Nice to meet you. We're Synergy Power. We're, just a little bit about us, we're in nine states. We've been around for over 10 years. We have over 50 million in bonding capacity. We've done quite a few projects, over 300 projects over the 10 years. We've put up about 300 megawatts of these types of projects, and a number of us come from legal backgrounds. We understand the planning process. We have a lot of flexibility in terms of who actually has site control on the 10 acres or the other acreage. I think we were focused on the city's control of one side of that landfill initially, but we're open to, you know, trying to form a good relationship to do a lot more of these.
Would you be open to develop on that additional five acres?
Sure, if that was available to us.
Okay. I mean, I'm just looking at it from the perspective that perhaps the Park District could get some revenue from it also.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have anything else you want to present?
Yeah, and most of what we come to get projects going is a lot of it is by referral. Actually, one of our guys, one of our project managers grew up nearby, and I think his, well, Keegan and his father knew some of the folks who worked here, so they said, "Hey, there's maybe an opportunity. You guys should check this out," so that's why we're here.
Yeah, he's a senior project manager for us, and his dad worked at the North Shore Sanitary District, Mr. Kretschmer. And Ryan's one of our senior PMs. He's been with us for over five years, and so, you know, that's how we were introduced to the city initially, and we'd be excited to do a project like this for the city.
Okay. So, David, how will we proceed then in two weeks?
Well, we would, we would bring back the option or the lease with a recommendation if there's no additional questions or concerns where, we could have questions or discussion about the lease options at that point after it's gone through legal review, and then have a recommendation on which to enter into, if either. Both, again, contingent on the creation of the zoning in January.
I didn't see, I'm not sure, I guess maybe...
Seems like all you're asking from the city is a lease agreement.
Yeah.
In our case, a lease option.
Everything else, if you're going to be successful in this project, that's up to you and the permits you have to get and the grants you need to get, and all you're asking for us, from us, is a lease agreement.
Correct.
And I guess I want to know when we come back for a recommendation or what's in these documents? Is this what you guys are sticking to?
One presented a lease, one presented an option.
Correct.
Right, but there are dollar amounts in each one, and I want to know, are those good?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that will be discussed.
Okay. Are there any other questions that the commission, Director Colangelo?
Can I answer a couple of questions?
You can, yes, sir.
This is for both groups. Even though that the city owns one parcel, the Park District owns the other, the city's still responsible for post-closure care on both closed landfills. That's when the, when it was sold to the Park District back in the day, that stipulation was in there that the city's still responsible for both. I'm assuming this would probably, would have to have the post-closure plan for the landfills amended through the EPA to do these projects. Am I correct on that?
So, we do landfills across the country. That's one of our expertises, is doing landfills and modifying the post-closure permit. It's not a simple process. You need very specific landfill engineers that go through, understand what can and can't be done on a cap, what type of racking material can get put in there so you don't cause any erosion-type issues that might undermine the integrity of the landfill. And one of the things that's really important in that, especially important in that is your lease, because your lease does need to take into consideration those types of things, whether it be certain indemnifications that are a result of the solar facility being on top of there, whether it be that you have monitoring requirements, and as a result, you need certain access to the landfill in order to be able to deliver on those types of things. And if I'm not mistaken, we provided you with a lease that takes all those things into consideration because those are things that we're doing on a regular basis with landfills around the country.
Well, the reason I'm asking, I'm not privy to the lease. I haven't seen any draft lease or whatever, because it also, somewhere down the line, if the project is no longer viable or cost-efficient or whatever, then I would assume that both companies would want to take responsibility... would want to take responsibility of restoring it back to the, to the way it was per the original plan, and somebody has to bear that cost, and...
Absolutely, and it's, it's a very important question that you'll raise. And so one of the things you'll note, I say this to City Attorney Randell, inside of our lease, one of the things that we put inside there is, is, is very important, because the landfill monitoring authorities will have specific requirements as it relates to the removal of the facility in the event that is inactive, or that the facility term is up. So they will require us to post certain sureties to, so that if we disappeared for whatever reason, that there is some finances available for the removal of the facility. So one of the clauses that we have inside of our agreement is a blanket statement that says, "We have to present you, the city, with a surety that you are comfortable with prior to us starting construction." Why is that so powerful? Because on day one, I'm sitting here and I'm investing money in interconnection, I'm investing money in permits, I'm investing money in, you know, going and getting a landfill permit, and I've left the door wide open for you guys at the end of the day to say, no, that surety ain't enough. Put more on there. So we're confident in our ability to deliver a surety that is appropriate both for the city, as well as the authorities that are monitoring the landfill. And that's very, that's part of the nuances of the lease, that are very legal and very technical, that are, that are very favorable towards the city, because we understand these projects, and we understand what their needs are. And so we, we put the, you, the city council at ease that know that the power is still in your hands, we're just waiting for the landfill authority before we actually present you what's appropriate, because they're going to have very detailed requirements based on what the cap looks like, and what they're requiring us to do or not do from an erosion control measure.
Well, since, and, and since we own these modifications, and I'm just going off of prior projects that were the city tried to do in the past, we have to be the applicant to the EPA as the property owner?
We are the applicant. You will be the signer as the property owner.
For the post-closure modification?
Yeah, so, well, you're the permit holder, so you will be, as the permit holder, you'll be modifying your permit to allow this use on that landfill. But we will be providing all that document, all the, you know, engineering support to pull all that together, and basically, we'll sign on the work that we put together as the owner of that land.
The other guy's going to speak.
Okay.
Yep.
You guys want to respond to...
Yeah, no, so we'll, we'll get the requisite experts involved. We've worked with Chevron on a couple of their large landfills and, and Superfund sites, and we've also worked with Republic, one of the largest waste management companies on their landfill, so we're very confident that we can manage the different complexities that come with building on a landfill.
And I'd just add, any sort of reclamation plan that the city requires, we're more than happy to enter into. So we've come to an agreement with the city as well.
Right, we're reviewing it. This is directed towards synergy?
Yes.
You're only looking for an option to enter a lease option?
The option for us is a period to do the diligence and the site feasibility, get the experts involved. There are resources, and, and then we would just be transparent. We'll tell you the exact conditions, exactly how we can set up the foundations, and how the system's going to actually get designed on the site. And then we can decide if, okay, hey, let's move forward with, with the lease and get this project going. Or if, if nothing else, then we move on to another site.
Okay, well, to make it apples to apples, would you be willing to submit a proposed lease?
Yeah.
Or you're not in a position at this point?
No, we could propose, we have the form leases. We, we actually are pretty pragmatic, in that we feel when things have to move fairly quickly, and there's a general sense of good faith negotiations, that it's better to keep it simple upfront, so that people can just get their work done, get to the point where complex leases have plenty of time to get negotiated, so it doesn't have to get negotiated upfront.
Right.
Because that's going to take a lot of time, a lot of back and forth. So we try to be very pragmatic, and then as we go down the road, if it doesn't look like it makes sense for the city, then basically, we can walk away, and not too much resources from the city has been taken up.
Anything else?
Quick question for both groups. Enter. After the site is installed, how many jobs are going to be attached to these sites in the long term? How many people are going to be employed?
I mean, for, for us, the maintenance of these sites are fairly, realistically, pretty, pretty low maintenance. So we would basically have a crew locally. We've done a fair amount of jobs in neighboring Indiana, so we have a good network there, where basically, there's maybe a group of maintenance people in the range of about six people that cover entire regions, right? So it's not like there's going to be an onsite 24-hour staff.
Staff.
It's not, it's not, realistically, we don't think these sites are built to maintain like that.
Yeah, so I, I agree with that. There's minimal onsite support beyond the state selling, now we're back to the community. That would probably be one of the bigger benefits. The only other thing I would say, just on that last comment, we did have our engineers, we pulled all the post-closure permits, looked through them, have an understanding how the cap is. We had our engineers in Illinois looking at them already, and are very confident in being able to get it done.
Commissioner McDowell, you raised this question before, is that, do you guys both pay prevailing wage?
To be honest, on private sites, we, we don't necessarily pay it, but on public sites, we do.
You guys?
Yeah, same.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll take this up at, on December 19th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number, call it nine. Department head commentary. Department heads, you have anything?
I just wanted to say something in this time slot, just because I got a phone call from a woman. She told me that she was in her 80s. Her and her husband tried to buy alcoholic beverages at Walmart, and the attendant asked her for ID. And she was incensed that, as an 80-year-old woman, she was asked for ID to purchase alcohol, and wanted to know why that is. And she talked to the customer service manager, and they said, well, that's the City of Zion's ordinance. And as it turns out, that is the City of Zion's ordinance. Everybody is carded for a purchase of alcohol. And I said, would you like this to be brought to the city council? And she said, yes. So I'm just, I didn't realize that everyone was carded, regardless of parents of age. And I'm bringing it to the city council's attention. That is our ordinance. If there's anybody that wants to do anything about it on behalf of this woman who called me.
I, I just want to respond, and this is probably going to be a smart aleck remark, but you could look at it two ways, that she was carded, and she was incensed that someone's carding her. But she could also look at it that she was being carded to be sure that she was over 65 and the senior citizen discount. Well, I guess it depends on how you look at it. But I don't know, I, I, it's my understanding, it's my recollection, that that was put in the code when this was passed, to ensure that everybody, that there was no question that somebody who's selling alcohol is going to say, well, they certainly looked like they were 21. So the law is that you card everybody, because you can't say you card everybody who looks like they're 35 or above. I, I don't know how else to do it, but I don't think that, I, I chuckle when they card me, that once a year when I buy alcohol.
You guys just busted my bubble. I thought they would card me because of...
Yeah, okay. All right. And I, I also want to let everybody know that we had a discussion, I believe it was the last city council meeting, it was about parking, or maybe it was two city councils ago, I can't remember. But we're going to have a meeting tomorrow at 4:00 here at City Hall with the business owners on Sheridan Road between 28th and 26th Street, to find out exactly what their preference is for two-hour parking or just open parking along that two-block area. Where part of it right now, a good portion of it right now, is, is limited to two-hour parking. So we're going to talk to them and see if we can make everybody happy on, on that. I'm not sure that that's ever possible, but we're going to, we're going to make an attempt at it. So I will be here. Commissioner McDowell is invited, so the rest of you can't be here, otherwise we have to have an open meeting, so we can't have that. But I just wanted you to know that we are working on that. We're also working on the garbage can issue, to try and get that resolved. And I believe the, the young woman that was here in the uniform came and had an issue in the past about...
Water.
Water deposits.
And we are also working on that, and we'll have a recommendation for the council in a couple of weeks. So item number, next is announcements. December 19th, 6:30 PM, there's a public hearing. The tax levy for the township board meeting, and a township board meeting. At 7:00, there's a public hearing for the tax levy and the Zion City Council meeting. December 25, 26, January 1 and 2, city offices are closed for the holidays. January 3rd, 7:00 PM, there's a Zion City Council meeting. Item number 10 is a closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2, open meetings for discussion of pending litigation and personnel. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Subdued.
A motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dattin?
Hi.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. We'd like to take up the personnel issue first, so... That's what we're going to take up first.